Good evening. Thank you all for attending tonight's Planning Commission meeting. We are going to call Monday, July 16th Planning Commission meeting to order at 7:08 PM. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Money?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Means?
Present.
Commissioner Pruitt?
Here.
Commissioner Marusiak?
Here.
Commissioner Shaquille?
Here.
Commissioner Dillon?
Here.
Present. Okay, we will now move to approve the agenda for tonight.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Who was the second on that? At this time, we would seek any citizen comments and requests for items not on tonight's agenda. These are items not pertaining to anything on our agenda. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the Council Liaison Report.
So I'm going to go ahead and not give a liaison report tonight, let you get on to business at hand, and we'll be excusing myself from the meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, this brings us to our consent agenda and our action items. First item is the minutes of July 2nd, 2018.
So Madam Chair, you may note that the, under the consent agenda, it notes, it has a note there, "Items listed below will be enacted by one motion. If separate discussion is desired on an item, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a commissioner." The intent here is to approve these action items in one motion without further discussion so we can move on to the public hearing. However, if there is additional discussion desired, please feel free to request it be removed and we'll add it to the regular business.
I can't speak for the entire commission, but I have one note on the minutes of July 2nd, 2018. A correction on the call to order, it says Chair Dillon called the meeting to order, and I was absent. So it would have been Vice Chair Pruitt. Other than that, I personally have no other comments on the items. And at this time...
So move to approve the consent agenda, sorry, move to approve consent agenda as listed in the agenda packet?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And this brings us to our public hearing. Yes, I believe Attorney Sturman.
All right. So first, to introduce to the commission, as we discussed previously, we have taken steps to retain a hearing examiner pro tem to assist you in presiding over this evening's hearing. Mr. Mark Scheidmeyer is here, and he serves, among other places, as the City of Olympia and Lewis County Hearing Examiner. And I know he has some introductory remarks, so I will turn it over to him for those. At the conclusion of his remarks, I do have some comments about appearance of fairness doctrine and the process of polling the individual commission members as per our past practice, which I would do before then turning it back to Mr. Scheidmeyer to open the public hearing and start taking public comment.
Thank you. Welcome.
If I'm, this is my opportunity. Good evening again. My name is Mark Scheidmeyer. I am the hearing examiner for a number of jurisdictions further south, City of Olympia being one of those, Lewis and Calhoun Counties being others. I've been serving as hearing examiner for more than 20 years for those various jurisdictions. I've been practicing attorney for nearly 40 years with the practice in real estate and land use. And I think your hearing examiner may have been the one who suggested that I be called in, sensing that there may be some complexities or complications to tonight's hearing, and just hope that I could provide some services to make sure that the hearing goes smoothly and efficiently. So I'm not acting in any sort of decision-making capacity tonight. I'm simply serving as your traffic cop. I'm here to direct the flow of information to the Planning Commission and returning it to the extent they have questions or comments or whatever else. And so my job is to try to make that presentation of testimony and giving of evidence as smoothly as can be, to resolve any evidentiary questions that may come up, if any, to address issues relating to relevance of certain testimony, and to perhaps resolve any questions regarding cross-examination of witnesses if that perhaps comes up, and other matters of general giving of testimony, and to receive in exhibits, make sure that they're noted correctly. So this is a first for me. I've conducted hundreds of hearings, but I'm not sure I've conducted one quite in this capacity as simply facilitator rather than decision-maker. So I'm learning as I go, and you'll have to forgive me if from time to time I forget myself and take perhaps a more active role just because of bad habits. And the Planning Commission can scold me if and when I seem to be taking too much charge of this hearing. It's not my intention, but sometimes things just happen. So, but with all hearings, I like to go through a number of things, sort of discuss why we're here, and as a result of why we're here, how we're going to do things. And so we're here because there was a development agreement that was established beginning in 2004 and amended from time to time through 2016, which allows for the development of hotel accommodations and residential units on the Morgan Parcel. That agreement is in place, and it's effective, and it guides our decision-making. It specifically allows for this development, but also requires that the actual site development occur through what's called a master plan or master plan development. So that's why we're here to, tonight. So the city of Snoqualmie has in place a series of ordinances which guide its development, and those require, among other things, that when a master plan is sought, there is to be a public hearing, there is to be only one required public hearing. That's the one taking place tonight. And so this may be your one and only opportunity for giving a public testimony relative to this application. So that's important, that if you wish to speak, this is the occasion that you do so. That public hearing results in Planning, Planning Commission action. The Planning Commission is required to submit written findings and recommendations to the city council, who then makes an ultimate decision whether to accept or reject the master plan. And so in that process, the Planning Commission is instructed to rule on six specific matters, and those are set forth in the Plan Development Regulation. So as it goes along, those are the suitability of the site for the proposed development, whether the requirements of the subdivision code have been met, whether adverse environmental impacts have been mitigated, whether all development is in compliance with the city statutes, what time limits to impose for development, and whether development is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So those are the six things that this hearing is all about tonight. It is for the Planning Commission to listen carefully to your testimony and your evidence, and to determine whether in fact those findings can be entered, acceptable or consistent with those six requirements, and if so, to submit those on to the city council. And it has a rather challenging task of doing so within 30 days of the conclusion of the hearing. Now, that conclusion may be tonight, but it doesn't necessarily mean tonight. The commission will decide when the hearing is concluded, and if it feels that it needs additional time to receive materials, then it can recess its hearing or continue its hearing to a later date before it deems its hearing final. But once it finds its hearing to be final, it then has 30 days to issue written findings to the city council as to what steps should take place. The master plans in the city of Snoqualmie have three major guidelines. There is the Plan Development Ordinance, that's Chapter 1750, and then there are specific requirements for master plans of residential units and master plans for commercial units. So those three ordinances are read together, and it's the Planning Commission's job to consider the requirements of those three ordinances when deciding whether those six requirements I mentioned earlier have been satisfied. And those have two flavors to them. There are what I would call design metrics. Those are measurable, quantifiable requirements for master planning, such as density and, and number of units and height limitations and all those sorts of things. Those are determined, you can measure those, you can count those, and you either meet them or you don't meet them. And in this instance, Planning SCAF can assure the council whether those, those design metrics have been satisfied. Then the other category is the more general one. That's the requirements, the goals associated with master planning. Those are less measurable, and those are where the Planning Commission has a bit more challenging task of determining whether or not the specific goals laid out by the city ordinances are satisfied by a particular master plan. And those speak to development that's at least as good or perhaps better than what individual lot development would be. It's development that conserves natural features, that protects aesthetic features, that provides for harmonious design, that does those sorts of things. For residential development, it's to provide compact urban development. For commercial, it's to optimize the efficiency of the property. So those are more generalized, less measurable standards that the city's regulations impose. And again, it will be the Planning Commission's job to listen to your testimony, determine whether those goals have in fact been met. So what is the context for tonight's hearing? Well, it's several things. First and foremost, it's the amended and restated development agreement that was established between the Muckleshoot Tribe and the City of Snoqualmie. That is the guiding source for much that will be decided. Many things have already been put in place through that, and they're not up for rediscussion or renegotiation. Then there are the various reports, plans, and specifications that have been presented to the commission. Those are all on matters of public record, and I believe have all been posted prior to tonight's hearing. I believe this commission may be well informed on this project already through past hearings, and so those past hearings are a part of what it relies upon in making its determination. And finally, and importantly, it's the evidence it receives tonight through the various parties. So the giving of that here, testimony will take place in a couple of segments. It'll begin by a presentation from staff, followed by a presentation by the applicant. I don't know what to anticipate in those presentations. They could be abbreviated in light of the extensive history to the, to this project already, so the commission may not need as full a presentation as it perhaps may have needed in other instances. That'll be determined. If there is, in fact, interested parties who are, have prepared organized testimony, then I would invite them to provide that testimony in advance. For example, if the Snoqualmie tribe has in fact an organized presentation, it has made its interest known, and if it has an organized presentation tonight, I would encourage it to give its testimony following the applicant's testimony, which then leads us to the public testimony, and at which time those who wish to be heard will be allowed to come forward to the podium. I'll put you under oath. I'll get some background information from you, and off you go. So at the conclusion of which, both the staff and the applicant will be allowed an opportunity for a suitable response. Now, very few rules on your testimony. First of all, maybe most importantly, you need to remember that this is not a political process. This is a fact-finding process, not a political process. This is not a popularity contest. This is not a public opinion polling process. This is not an issue of who has the most number of supporters. This is not anything like that. This is a fact-finding process, and the decisions will reach solely by supporting facts, not by whether a certain number of individuals are supporting the application or a certain number are opposing the application. Numbers of supporters and opponents have nothing to do with what this Planning Commission is engaged in tonight. And for that matter, things like petitions have no value, because again, this is not a political process. This is not a listing of how many people are interested or opposed. This is simply what sort of facts support or do not support the required findings for a decision. I'm going to suggest that we limit testimony to 10 minutes per person, given the size of this crowd. If that could get us in a few hours, and it's already well into the evening, and we don't want to be here till midnight. I've had midnight meetings. They don't go well. People get cranky at midnight. So we'll try to move things along, and if any of you feel like potentially your testimony will be more than 10 minutes, perhaps you can defer your comments to the very end, so you're not holding other witnesses hostage for any unduly lengthy testimony. But even then, I'm probably going to be cross about anyone who wants to go longer than 10 minutes. And by the way, 10 minutes is a long time to speak. You can say a lot in 10 minutes. If for any reason we're going really late, I may condense the time limits down to three minutes. That's not my goal. I really like to allow as full a testimony as possible. Public witnesses are not going to be subject to cross-examination. Anyone who describes himself or herself as an expert can be subject to it, but others are not going to be cross-examined. Although members of the commission may have questions, and those are to better understand your testimony relative to their needed findings, and so you may anticipate questions by the commission, and I may try to facilitate those. And I may actually, may possibly have my own questions, not because of, again, my having a decision-making role, but simply sensing things that might be better brought out a little, or more fully discussed, or things where I think a little further testimony might be beneficial to the commission. So I may interject a question or two simply to flesh things out, but otherwise, I have no role in the, in the decision process. Again, at the conclusion of tonight's hearing, it may be closed, or it may not be. That will be a decision for the commission as a whole to make based upon the testimony or in the information it receives. And finally, last couple of things, perhaps it's important, we just talked about what this hearing's about. Let's remember what it's not about. This hearing is not about whether development can occur on this property. This is not the opportunity to get up and testify that there should be no development on the Morgan Parcel. That's already been decided. And so that was decided through the development agreement. So tonight is not the night to talk about there being no development of any kind. This is also not the time to renegotiate the development agreement. So its findings and its agreements are fixed, and they are mandatory to this Plank, Planning Commission. So not only is this not the evening to talk about no development, it's not an evening to arm-wrestle with the development agreement. That is a binding agreement. And finally, this is not the night to relitigate matters that have been recently litigated separately through the legal process. Again, those matters are resolved through litigation, and they are not the subject of tonight's hearing. So if those are sounding negative in any way, it's not meant to be. It's simply to make sure that we refine the testimony to those things that are relevant. And so what's relevant is, again, is the proposed master plan consistent with, one, the development agreement entered into with the city, and, two, is it consistent with the ordinances of Snoqualmie relating to master planning? And again, if so, then the Planning Commission will make written findings to the city council accordingly. So that's our, my entry. Does the Planning Commission have any questions about my long-winded start to this?
I do not. The rest of the commission may, but thank you for assisting us in tonight's hearing.
Sure, thank you.
Welcome.
And Madam Chair, then I'll begin with presentation of testimony. That would begin through city staff.
Well, and if, before we do that, if I may jump in on the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
...appearance of fairness doctrine.
Thanks, just to get going.
And I know the commission members are familiar with this. For those in the audience who are not, that is a doctrine that evolved in Washington for land use matters that are decided by local quasi-judicial bodies. It's now codified in state statute, and it's designed to ensure that the proceedings are fair and not only are actually fair, but appear fair. So there's a couple of things that are entailed by the appearance of fairness doctrine. One is, the statute prohibits ex parte or off-the-record communications between the decision-makers and proponents or opponents of the project. And so if those conversations occur, the Planning Commission members need to place on the substance of those communications on the record. I'll be asking them to do that if there were any this evening. And then an announcement made of the content of the communication and of the various parties' rights to rebut the substance of those if, at any hearing here where actions considered or taken on the subject. So for example, if someone ran into one of you at the grocery store, and you had a conversation about, "I like this," or "I don't like this project," I would expect commission members to talk about those communications here and provide an opportunity for anyone on the other side, should they wish to, to rebut the substance of whatever might have been said. So given that, if there are certain potential violations of the fairness doctrine that can't be cured, it may be that certain commission members wish to recuse themselves. If they do, that would mean they would leave the room and not participate further, either in hearing this or in deciding on the matter. So I'm going to poll the commission members with a specific set of questions and go one by one with answers, so that any disclosures about communications or other appearance of fairness issues can be made, and then to provide opportunities, as I said, for parties. So the first question is, do you have any interest in any of the property that is the subject of the proceeding? For example, do you own any interest in the Morgan Parcel or any shares in any of the companies or organizations that are part of the applicant? So I'll go, Commissioner Money?
I do not.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Means?
No.
Commissioner Pruitt?
No.
Commissioner Marusiak?
No.
Commissioner Mahmoud?
No.
I'm sorry, Shaquille, I'm sorry.
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Dillon?
No.
Okay. Are you employed by or have any prospective employment with any of the parties to this proceeding? Commissioner Money?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Means?
No.
Commissioner Pruitt?
No.
Commissioner Marusiak?
No.
Commissioner Shaquille?
No.
Commissioner Dillon?
No, but the company I am employed by does business with Columbia Hospitality.
Okay, thank you. And you may think this is related, a related question. Do you have any relationships that you believe materially affect your ability to impartially decide this matter? For example, family, social, or associational relationships with either the applicant or their attorneys, or other folks who may be in this room or who oppose the project? Commissioner Money?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Means?
No.
Commissioner Pruitt?
No.
Commissioner Marusiak?
No.
Commissioner Shaquille?
No.
Commissioner Dillon?
As I stated earlier, my company does business with Columbia Hospitality, but I do not benefit financially from that relationship, and I do not handle it directly.
Okay. And do you believe that it materially affects your ability to decide on the matter or hear the matter in front of you?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Have you had any oral or written ex parte or off-the-record communications with any opponents or proponents of the proposal before you? And if so, could you disclose briefly the substance of those communications? Commissioner Money?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Means?
No.
Commissioner Pruitt?
No.
Commissioner Marusiak?
No.
Commissioner Shaquille?
No.
Commissioner Dillon?
No.
All right, based on count, the commission answers to the above questions, does any party or anyone in the room wish to challenge the continued participation of any of the commission members in the proceeding? Seeing none, I will turn it back to Mr. Scheidmeyer to open the hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, commission members.
And so, Mr. Hoffman will be, will be hearing from you.
Good evening, commission and public. Mark Hoffman, Community Development Director, City of Snoqualmie.
Can I have you, it's my habit to swear staff as well as all other witnesses, so would you please raise your right hand? You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Go ahead.
And I'll be brief. I'll start with some background. Some of it may be repetitive. I have essentially two slides, but the other eight kind of give some flavor and might be used later as references. And I'll do it from the podium so I can use the laser. Tonight is a public hearing for the Salish Lodge and Spa Expansion Master Plan. I'm sure everyone in the room is aware of the locations, but for any sort of testimony tonight, I just want to be very clear that we're talking about essentially, and you can see how much coffee I drink. Trying to get it to stop, but the black noted area is the Morgan Parcel and the Tocco Parcel. It's essentially east of the existing Salish Lodge and Spa and northwest of existing Tocco Road. The planning effort for this area started in 2002. It's now incorporated into our comprehensive plan. This exhibit just kind of gives some context that the Snoqualmie Falls planning area consists of this brown or mustard color. What it's not is the mill site and Snoqualmie Ridge, historic Snoqualmie or the urban growth area that's not annexed. What's key from the comprehensive plan is that there are significant features for this planning area that have been captured since 2002, most of which you heard about in May and June at your Planning Commission introduction. But Snoqualmie Falls is a major scenic tourist attraction. Most importantly of these seven are the view share considerations from Snoqualmie Falls. From the comprehensive plan, this is our future land use map, and it's just important to note that residential is the yellow, kind of the brown-orange is the business retail, and the planned commercial industrial is the, I'll call it periwinkle. This is the zoning map for the City of Snoqualmie. The area that we're talking about primarily is the Morgan Parcel and the Tocco Parcel. For tonight, it's the yellow planned residential, whoop, go back, and the rust-colored business retail two, and the purple-colored planned commercial industrial. These are the three zoning designations from the legend of that map that weren't readable from the last slide. Business retail two, planned residential, planned commercial industrial. Those are the three existing zones for this site. And this is the key slide. This is actually the entire staff presentation. In 2002, the planning for this area began with the city. In 2003, specifically on June 11th, the city adopted a mitigated determination of non-significance. SEPA document governs a series of actions. These are listed, listed by the bulleted items in order. Adoption of Annexation Implementation Plan, Amendments to Snoqualmie Municipal Code, Approval of a Development Agreement, the Annexation Approval, even though it's exempt from CEQA, it's covered by that environmental checklist and action, and then Approval of a Planned Residential, Planned And then approval of a planned residential, planned commercial industrial master plan, which is a different color on the slide because that's why we're here tonight. What's also covered by that SEPA document in action is what possibly comes next, which is issuance of development permits and approvals for construction. The key is that the item for this public hearing is not the last bulleted item. It's the colored one, the master plan in the red. The four bullets before that are already done. The city has adopted an Annexation Implementation Plan. They have made amendments to Snoqualmie Municipal Code. They have approved a development agreement. First two with the original applicant, and I believe three, four, and five with the new owner, the Mukulshu tribe. And then, most importantly, in 2016, the, in the sake of time, I won't describe them, but all of the previous five, whatever remained relevant became the amended sixth version of the development agreement with Stan, which stands right now. For tonight, the planned residential, planned commercial industrial, master plan was submitted on April 2nd, was found complete on April 30th. I believe the first meeting and introduction by the applicant was in May. You've discussed the background information and materials in June and July. And tonight is a notice public hearing. It's an open record public hearing. And it's an opportunity to, for the public, to submit evidence and testimony concerning the proposed master plan. The next step, and we can go, we can cover this at the end after the testimony, is deliberation and recommendation from the Planning Commission. And then, I'll leave that up at the end. This is mostly so that at the end, if you have any questions or need to contact, that's me. So, to conclude this introduction, I'm going to leave something that looks like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoffman, just in terms of exhibits, then, the exhibits you have to date are the, those documents that are posted on the city's website, then? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, in addition to those, I believe there were some, some correspondence back and forth between the Mukulshu and Snoqualmie tribes over, late last week or over the weekend? Is that recognized in those documents?
I, I know that they were forwarded to the Planning Commission late last week, along with the packet. I don't, I would not vouch for every one of them being on the website, though I've seen an email that says they are.
Okay. So-
And, and we have some public comment emails that we need to read into the record to make sure, because those were received today and clearly are not on the website.
Okay. So at some point, perhaps toward the end of the evening, we can do some house cleaning, housekeeping with respect to documents that may not otherwise be recognized as exhibits, then? Would you agree?
Thank you.
Okay. Attorney?
I should say one, one more thing to, just a point of clarification regarding the map and the boundaries of the respective residential, commercial, business parcels, and that is that the, the code specifically says, and I'm looking at 17.20.050, that if there are two or more contiguous parcels in common ownership, which we have here, and in both the planned commercial industrial district and the planned residential district, which we have here, that one plan can be submitted for all the parcels, as the applicant has chosen to do. And the, these specific boundaries that are shown on the map don't specifically restrict where the different uses are located, so long as the minimum requirements for the uses in each district are met as accord, as specified in the code. So, just wanted to make, make that clarification, in case people are looking at that map versus the, the proposal for the application.
Thank you. And so we'll turn then to the applicant. Records should reflect that it's appearing through its counsel, Terry Danish, and also through Rachel Nathanson, who are present, both present this evening. And so, Mr. Danish, Ms. Nathanson, how would you like to present? What's your-
We have a presentation planned, and our first speaker is Madrine Salgado from the tribe.
Okay. How many witnesses do you have?
About three.
Those intending to give testimony, perhaps you can stand and just raise your right hand collectively. You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Laser. Do you need a-
And for the benefit of the commission, if you could identify yourself and address, work address, that would be great.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Madrine Salgado. I am a proud Mukulshu tribal member, and I also work in the Government Relations Department at our tribe. I do work at the tribal administration office. I can provide a card with the address before I leave here today. I'm here basically just to give a brief comments about our, our tribal history, and some comments about community, and, and all the technical issues and items will be covered by my colleagues over here to my right. So, our ancestors would trade, hunt, gather, and fish, and travel along the mountains and the system, and the water systems throughout the central Puget Sound and surrounding areas. These activities created familial and cultural ties, as well as political networks with other natives in this area. As a result of these widespread connections and networks, Mukulshu is the only tribe in Washington that is a signator of two treaties. So that gives you some background as to our connection to this area. As a government, the tribe has social and economic obligations to its membership and community. With these responsibilities in mind, Mukulshu is devoted and committed to seeking, offering, and preserving access to quality community programming, including housing, education, healthcare, and job opportunities. In addition to essential government programs and development, Mukulshu is also dedicated to our natural environment. Being a good steward of our natural resources is a core value to the Mukulshu identity. The tribe wants to be a good neighbor, and fostering healthy communication and cultivating respectful relationships within our community is held in high regard. And that's why you find us here today. Sharing with you our vision of a project that we're very proud of. One that reflects our commitment to our people, respects our land and our culture, and will be what we see as a special addition to an already extraordinary and beautiful area.
Thank you. Ms. Nathanson?
My name is Rachel Nathanson, and I, I'm going to ask when, if she, I don't think I can move the slides, right?
No, actually, Mr. Gurken behind you is controlling the-
Oh, okay.
It's a PDF, Jason.
Oh.
There you go. So- If we could go to the next slide, I think then-
Can you use it?
Oh, Mark has it.
Can you use it?
Ah. I don't want a pointer. I don't, I'm sorry.
Just put your arm like this when you want to.
Okay.
Or you could do something like Emerald.
Magic. Okay. And let's go one more, because that's, okay, great. Thank you so much. I want to thank the Planning Commission and the city staff for your time and dedication so far. We've been at this for a few months now, and I've really appreciated your dedication to ask all the questions you've asked, and I know you'll continue to do that as you move this project forward. We very much appreciate that, the, the work that you've put in so far and the work yet to come. We hope to keep this short tonight, but we would like to reserve some time at the end to address any questions or comments, if, if those are needed. And this is basically going to be a very shortened version of a presentation we gave to the Planning Commission on May 21st. And it's mostly for the benefit of the public, who were not here then. I would say that if you want more details, the complete master plan and supporting documents are on the city website, and I would direct you there to get more information. The project began in the 1990s. We looked at the comprehensive plan. We looked at the zoning code to see what is permitted on the Morgan parcel, and that is, as has already been stated, commercial and residential uses. From there, we went through extensive, years-long environmental analysis and, and review by the city and the city's consultants, and that culminated in the 2004 development agreement. The Mukulshu Indian Tribe purchased the property in 2007, and then, in the course of, again, many years of conversation with the city, we came to the 2016 amended and restated development agreement, all of which required public hearings, public input, and brings us to where we are today. So the development agreement is basically a blueprint for what is permitted on the Morgan parcel. And that current development agreement allows for us to construct up to 250 hotel rooms and 175 residential units. But as you will see, our master plan is basically stating we will not exceed up to 182 hotel rooms and no more than 150 residential units. The master plan is not meant to be every single detail of the project, but greater detail is provided and in the appropriate way, in accordance with city regulations, the binding site improvement plan for the hotel, and then the pre-plating and plating stages for the residential. Next slide, please. I'm going to let you go one more, I'm sorry. Thank you. I just want to remind us of what the benefits of this project are to the city. The city recently adopted a goal, which I'll read, to provide an economic base that supports approved long-range city revenue goals, and that is precisely what this project would do for the city. It's a companion project to the existing Salish Lodge and Spa, which is a significant, a successful business in the city. It has a proven record of $20 million gross revenue per year, and that creates a steady revenue source for the city, which supports economic development goals within your jurisdiction. The Mukulshu Indian Tribe furthermore has a proven commitment to the Salish Lodge. They have reinvested nearly $22 million into the lodge since they purchased it, and that is to keep that economic engine going and create, make sure that it is the gem that it's known for today. Our fiscal analysis of the proposed new hotel shows that there would be a net $10 million to the city over the next 20 years, and based on the record of the Salish Lodge, we would say that's a very conservative number, but we know that that's something we can bank on. Finally, there are spin-off benefits from this project. Guests coming to the hotel and the site will visit stores, coffee shops, restaurants in the city of Snoqualmie. They will spend money adding more revenue to the city and helping to support local job growth. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ron Mitchell from MG2, our architect, and he will walk you through sort of the pictures of what the master plan includes. Thank you.
Good evening. Ron Mitchell. I'm here with my colleague from MG2, where the architects engaged in the master plan. Our address is on 1101 First Avenue in Seattle, Washington. I try to keep it brief. Architects like to talk. We look at this as actually an expansion of existing lodge and spa, not a standalone property, but expanding across the way. Columbia Hospitality is here, and they've set that vision. We are looking at it in multiple phases. The total amount of hotel rooms will be 182. We're going to be having event spaces that are flexible for everything from as small as a wedding, an intimate wedding, a big wedding, and meeting spaces. We have food and beverage, and we have a signature spa. Next slide, please. So, this aerial rendering shows the design intent for the master plan. Here's the existing hotel with the falls, the existing parking lot. As I suspect everyone knows, there's an existing road that comes up here to an upper parking lot. Our proposal is removing that upper parking lot. Every car will be replaced with a lower parking lot, so there will be no long departure to the general community. And we want to take that road, turn it into a pedestrian path, help tree it out, so it's, you know, not just, you know, it's no longer there. And in replacement of the parking lot, do a meadow with a natural water pond feature. And the hotel you see is here, and you'll see more as we go through, but the event space and the meeting rooms is there, the guest rooms in phase one. We have a spa, a wellness center, and then a phase two hotel nestled into the trees, and we'll talk more about that. Next slide, please. I'm going to have to get close my eyes. So here's the existing hotel, the existing falls, the lower parking lot, the, the parking spaces here. Again, we, we're moved out of the road, and there's a pedestrian path, the event space, phase one hotel, the spa, and phase two. The residential, which is, we're, we're here for the hotel, the residential, we can make commitments to, but we have not designed that yet. That would be in conjunction with a, a future developer, but we've got the spaces. We, it's a little hard to see here, but fundamentally, the site consists, thank you. I guess that's better. Fundamentally, the site consists of new growth and second, and slightly older growth. There's no old growth here. And we're citing the building to maintain as much of the older growth, the more special trees, the cedar trees and stuff, we're maintaining there. We're also going through, and you'll see, I guess I should read some facts from my paper now. In the hotel site, it's 21.4 acres. The entire site with the residential is 49.6 acres. The open space requirement for the entire development is 13.7 acres. We are providing 12.7 acres just in the hotel, because we believe, one, it's a very special site, two, people want to enjoy nature, and we want to preserve as much of it as possible. So we've cited the hotel, preserving as, as much as possible, the older growth, not old growth, but the whole entry road, where, as you come in, we're saving, you'll see another side saving as much of the trees as possible, keeping the grove. As you come in and see the hotel, you'll, you'll pass through the existing forest and saving as much as possible the trees throughout, through the parking lot, and as buffers, because our guests will appreciate that, and I believe the environment will as well. As you come off the main road, we have a public road here, which will take you to the residential development. But at that point, we turn it into a private road, because by turning it into a private road, we can make it smaller. Our goal is to have less asphalt. We like to think of it more as a state park, you know, a smaller asphalt road, so we've asked and been given permission to turn it into private roads, so we can have less pervious surface. We have 400 parking, 404 parking stalls, all broken up into smaller lots and set with the trees. Again, we have 182 hotel rooms. We won't exceed that, and I think we have permission for 250. And we're looking at 130 residential lots, as opposed to 150. And that is so we can have more trees. You know, we've-
Just now.
Okay. Next slide, please. Oh, I guess you can't just click it. Okay. We are looking at phase development. The yellow shows what we're thinking in phase one, to be built immediately. The first thing we'll be doing is the lower parking lot. The entryway, you'll see this entry will come through the existing grove to the lobby. We'll have 90-plus hotel rooms in four stories in phase one. We have an event space in one story over here with meeting rooms and a ballroom. We have a spa of one story over here. So the yellow is phase one, and then phase two will be the spa, and phase three will be the, the next 90 guest rooms. And then, the residential site is a phase that we will be coming with a developer with the final details for, but are committing to those numbers. So you see here is the event space with its own separate drop-off, parking nestled within the trees. Phase one guest room is four stories. Phase 1 guest room is four stories, 55 feet in height. The maximum height is 75. We want to keep it below that. So rather than 75 feet, we're keeping it to 55 feet at the tallest spot. Here's the lobby. Here's what I was showing earlier, where you'll come up the road, you'll enter, and you'll see a side of this, through this grove of trees, to the hotel lobby. The spa with a unique swimming pool and Phase 2 guest rooms. There are interconnecting pathways. I call them multimodal trails, but our intention is connected up to the existing on both ends of the site. We're proposing some type of meadow pond, a natural-like environment for beauty as well as habitat. And the apiary, we've been told by Columbia, we must keep the apiary, because the honey's popular. Next slide, please. I guess scroll down, please. Here's an image of the look. This is the event space with the food and beverage. You know, it was very interesting for us. We wanted to develop a palette of materials and a look that we felt was special and unique, that could only be found here, and was about this site. One of the beauties you'll see in other slides is these Douglas firs. The canopy really starts up around 55, 60 feet, so our guest rooms will be done by then. So we want to keep these trees in the foreground, so you see through them and enjoy the meadow. And, you know, the natural materials of the tree, some of the trees that we are cutting down, we're gonna repurpose as a structure of the building, so it has a sense of place and purpose from the site. And we like the beauty of the trees. We'll be working with Mukul Shuute to put some of their colors, get some cultural references in, the colors, colors in the artwork. And the materials we're looking are black and cedar, the natural trees, Corten steel. And we joke and say, all the materials that look good when they're wet, because it's gonna be wet. So you can see, you'll see this motif of the forest being a metaphor for the building throughout. Page, scroll down, please. We don't have to go into details, but here's the conference center with the ballroom and banquet room, meeting rooms, a food and beverage outlet. But we show this image, because when we see these colonnades you see coming through the building again, we want to take trees from the existing site, weave them through the building so that the guests and visitors can kind of appreciate the majestic nature of these trees, Corten steel, which is a rusting steel, and some board-form concrete, working with the landscape. We don't want it, we want to let the landscape and the environment help define the look of the building. Page down, please. This is the entry grove I was telling you about. So when you came off the main road, we'll preserve all these Douglas firs. You'll come in through, and this is why I was saying we're gonna neck the road down, so you don't see lots of sidewalks and stuff. It feels like a state park. You'll come in, and then these, you know, the power of these trees that we will repurpose, marching you through to the lobby, the black and cedar, which is a stained cedar, Corten, the rustings, you know, again, materials that look like they're organic and natural. And then, with further exploration, how do we put some of the tribal cultural colors and joy and references in the building? Because they're beautiful. Next slide. Again, the tallest building is 55 feet high and within a 75-foot height limit. So we're intentionally coming down 20 feet. We don't need the height. We don't want the height. And what I like, you'll see in other slides, is really the bottom of the fir trees are about here, so you can see under them and through them. Next slide, please. The spa. So you can see back here, our renderer didn't want to show all the cars, but those are the parking lots. And, you know, trying to save the trees, so you get filtered views of the parking. And the spa, the wellness center, open to the public as well. And just, we want to have this metaphor of a grove of trees. You pass through this board-form concrete, like the mountain rocks you would see, pass through into the grove of trees, get into the wellness center. Next slide, please. There's that metaphor for the mountain rocks you come through. We have, you know, we've grown very fond of this sense of a forest and all these trees. And you percolate through the trees as you go through the building, and you visually, and, next slide. So our swimming pool, we wanted to play off on that. And you can see the forest, natural forest trees in the distance. And to celebrate that, we're saying the swimming pool has these trunk-like trees, so you feel like you're swimming in a mountain pond. You can still swim laps. We do have two lanes. Again, something special for this area, something about this area, about the forest. Next slide, please. Here you see what I was referring to earlier about how wonderful it is with these Douglas firs, because their canopy doesn't start to quite high. We can nestle the building underneath it. The guests can enjoy views. The conference center is one story, two stories, the lobby. Next slide, please. Along the roadways, we're going to work out to preserve a significant number of the existing Douglas firs, so you don't feel like you're in that new road. We will be planting, we will be having a gravel, if you will, but accessible gravel path on the hotel side. Again, we want less concrete. We'll be planting out with floral trees and natural plants. And all the lighting is intended to be very, very low. No lighting going up to the sky. And again, more like a state park than a urban hotel. Next slide. We did some view analysis with a drone and standing. So what we're looking at is standing here at the viewpoint, looking back at the hotel. We flew the drone up at different heights, 60 feet, 70 feet, 80 feet, looking to see if we could see it through the trees. And we could not see the trees even at 100 feet above, and our building's 55. So from this major lookout here, there will be no visual impact of the hotel to the falls visitors. Next slide. This here is, the covered bridge is right there. Just to give you an orientation. So we're really at the base of the covered bridge a little bit towards the falls, towards the hotel. And we, again, flew the drone up. And you, the drone, nothing was visible until at 100 feet, you could begin to see the drone. But our building's at 55 feet. So we're confident to say you won't see the proposed hotel from either of those two lookouts. Next slide, please. And we did look at what the visual impact would be from Tolkal Road. This here would be the main entry. And you will see pieces of it filtered. And we actually do want some people to see our buildings. But you can see that the closest the building is to the property line is 40 feet away. So it's set back from the property 40 feet, and it's angled. So what we're showing is worst-case scenario, where we'll have to take some trees down within that 40 feet. We don't have the exact tree plant, so we're, there will probably be some trees, but we're showing you worst-case, where we'll plant it out with some cedars. And then you will preserve those further cedars. I'm sorry, Douglas firs. So you'll see filtered views of the hotel property from Tolkal Road. I think that's the last slide. The next... This is just a fact sheet, which I'm... So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. That concludes the presentation by the applicant, which then gets us to the public hearing. And so, again, I had made the invitation as to organize interested parties to have an opportunity collectively. The witness, or the testimony list that I've been presented is quite short, and perhaps we can just go to it instead. And I believe Mr. Russ, who is from the tribe, if I'm not mistaken, is the first witness, and maybe that works well anyway. So, Mr. Russ, if you would come forward. And you have some material.
Yeah.
Let me get you sworn in, and then we'll get away, get underway with the exhibits. So would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Could you repeat that?
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And can you provide us background information, and then we'll get to your exhibits?
They're not just exhibits. They're just another copy of the public comment that was submitted via email.
Oh, oh, oh.
Just submitting it here for the record.
So these are the comments that the tribe submitted late last week?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, then.
Thank you. Wiazi, bin nach kanicha, tizda snoqualmie shud. Hello, honorable ones. My name is Michael Ross, and I am of the Snoqualmie people. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe's comments. The Snoqualmie people have had and continue to have a spiritual, cultural, and historical connection to the Snoqualmie Falls. We have and will continue to oppose any projects that will disturb, desecrate, or otherwise impair the integrity of the tangible and intangible characteristics of the area. The tribe has numerous concerns with the Salish plan and urges the planning commission to conduct a thorough and critical review and require various technical updates to ensure the expansion does not adversely affect the Snoqualmie Falls and the tribal members' religious freedoms. This is not about slowing economic competition. This is about protecting what is sacred. I've been told that coming here today is an act of false hope and that I live in an optimistic reality. There's nothing that I could say or do that will change the inevitable outcome of this expansion. So I'm not just here for my people, but I'm here for you, because your decisions affect not only your city and your citizens, but our tribe and our members. This property means more to us than anything anywhere else on earth. To give some context, the Snoqualmie Falls remains central to the tribe's creation story and religious practice. The tribe believes that the mist generated from the Snoqualmie Falls connects the earth to the heavens, and that a powerful water spirit lives in the plunge pool below the Snoqualmie Falls. In further recognition of the importance of the Snoqualmie Falls, it was designated on the traditional cultural property National Register of Historical Places in 2009. Snoqualmie Falls and lands surrounding it, including the project site, are sacred sites to the Snoqualmie people. And in the tribe's belief, that their religious practice will be diminished by the development in the vicinity of the falls. The cultural assessment provided with the Salish master plan verifies the cultural importance of the falls and the surrounding lands, not only to the Snoqualmie people, but the Mukul Shuute people also. But to more than just those two tribes, surrounding tribes in the area believe in this area to be sacred. The report also confirms use and cultural, spiritual significance while explaining why a survey with shovel probes would not yield any physical evidence of pre-contact. The Salish master plan contains no mention of the expansion's proximity to land on the National Register of Historical Places or how it will increase its impact to the traditional cultural property through increased activity at the existing facilities of the Salish Lodge and the Snoqualmie Falls Park. But it needs to. In fact, the plan does not even acknowledge the existence of the importance of Snoqualmie Falls' traditional cultural property. The Salish master plan continues, sorry, contains two simulated visual analyses, which we saw just moments ago. But we propose that this is not feasible, and it is not sufficient to protect the religious use of the Snoqualmie Falls. As we saw, the drone flying up to 100 feet could then be visible, but did not take into factor all the trees that would have to be taken down between that drone and the actual viewing point at the falls to accommodate for roads and parking. Based on the documentation provided, there's no assurance that there will be an impact to the view shed and related religious use of the Snoqualmie Falls. It neglects critical, relevant viewpoints from elsewhere within the Snoqualmie Falls' traditional cultural property. Therefore, the tribe urges the commission to require the Mukul Shuute Indian Tribe to provide additional simulations before moving ahead with the project. The project will place the sacred and pristine nature of the Snoqualmie Falls with an ever-more crowded, noisy, commercialized tourist attraction, which will be impermissibly burdened the Snoqualmie tribal members' free exercise of religion. Enhanced public access must not come at the expense of the tribe's constitutionally protected rights. Other aspects of the master plan need to be updated, including the soils, groundwater, and geological hazard report that is 16 years old, the wetland and wildlife assessment that is 17 years old, and the Salish expansion water quality analysis that is also 17 years old. These outdated reports do not reflect the current landscape, conditions, regulatory landscape, or state of knowledge. Each of these reports must be redone to account for the current state of the landscape. So in conclusion, the tribe appreciates the city's consideration of these comments. And to reiterate, we are not opposed to economic development. If this project were being proposed on the ridge or downtown Snoqualmie, we would be in support of it. Our objection to the Salish plan is about protecting sacred land from desecration and for protection from the infringement on a traditional cultural property listed on the National Register of Historical Places. Because once this is done, it cannot be undone. So in closing, the tribe urges the planning commission to consider three requests. We request that you acquire more information from the Salish plan and provide a rigorous review of the master plan with a thoroughly updated soils, groundwater, and geological report, as well as an updated wetland and wildlife assessment, as these are 17 years old, along with an updated Salish expansion water quality analysis, which is also 17 years old. We ask the planning commission to demand updated assessments, analysis for such a large project that has such permanent ramifications, as well as an updated transparent simulations from the Mukul Shuute Indian Tribe before allowing the discussion of this project to move forward. Secondly, the tribe asks the city consult with the tribe and the Department of Agriculture and Historic Preservation about the Salish plan and to revise the Salish plan as needed to better protect the tribe's most sacred place. Finally, we request another public hearing to discuss the updated assessments, as well as the results of the consultations with the tribes and the Department of Agriculture, sorry, of Archaeology and Historic Preservation. Deha dugsh. In my language, that is, thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. And I apologize for misstating your name. I couldn't read your writing. I have...
Oh, yeah, it's cryptic. Thank you.
Thank you. The next individual I have on the sign-up sheet is Tom Clark. Clark, can I have you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go ahead.
On behalf of Compass Outdoor Adventures here in the Snoqualmie Valley, we have a very close relationship here with Columbia Hospitality and in particular, the Salish Lodge. We've worked with them in numerous areas from our consumer trips and adventures all the way through to our corporate adventures. We're happy to continue this relationship and grow this relationship as it grows itself. If you don't have any other pieces we'd like to mention. Thank you.
Thank you. The next individual, I am struggling to decipher the handwriting. It's Gary, and I'm not sure of the last name.
Gary Skibbe.
Thank you. Mr. Skibbe, could you please spell your last name?
It's S-S-K-I-B-A.
Thank you. And if you'll raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go ahead.
I'm the primary principal of No Boat Brewing Company, which is located up on the ridge. I think I recognize some faces in here, so some people have been visiting my place, which is good. I, these pictures are the first actual pictures that I've seen of the actual lodge. And I don't mind sharing that my biggest concern, and I am here in support of the project, is this place is gonna be so cool, I don't know if anybody's gonna leave it and come visit us. So my ask might be to tone it down a little bit. But what I really want to share is that we are a business that I know currently benefits from the Salish Lodge operation. I think we will continue to benefit. We are, the city doesn't know this, but we're looking to expand 7,000 square feet in our current building footprint. And this just affirms that our strategic decisions make sense for us. So aside from the fact that I think this is going to be great for us from a selfish standpoint, I think it's going to be great for the community. We're excited about it, we look forward to it, I can see the sincere focus on trying to make this congruous with what this community is about, so I just want to voice my support, and thank you for giving me the time to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Those are the only names who have signed up in advance, uh, for giving of testimony, but that by no means limits those who might otherwise wish to. If, there are others, if you'll just identify yourselves, and yes, sir, if you'll come forward.
I believe I did sign up, but I'm not sure, maybe you didn't have it.
Maybe there is more than one sheet, ah.
There was this one, but then it was used for public works, so I wasn't sure if you were actually wanting to speak.
No, I, I was. Are you Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Okay. So Mike Seal, would you please raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go ahead.
I, I guess, first of all, I'd like to state that because I'm on the Economic Development Commission with Mr. Murziah, I'd, I'd like to make sure that this comment that I'd like to make is on behalf of Segala Sellers and not as a part of the Economic Development Commission. I talked to our chairwoman, and she agreed that as long as I made that separate comment to my comments here today, that, that she would agree with that. Segala Sellers is, um, in a way benefited from the Salish Lodge in the past, and we know that we will continue to benefit from the Salish expansion. In full disclosure, they are a customer of Segala Sellers and have been for quite some time. We appreciate the, their approach to their business, and they, we appro- appreciate their approach to, to the, the quality that they are at the Salish Lodge, and the quality of the food and the beverages that, that they represent as well. So we know that the economic development of the entire area is dependent upon tourism, and so we, we know that this expansion to the Salish will add a great deal to the tourism beyond the million and a half or two million visitors to the falls each year. The downtown benefits from any growth up on the ridge or any growth to the Salish expansion area. So Segala Sellers being a downtown historic, downtown business, we know that we look forward to this development as well.
Thank you. I believe that is the end of the, of the signed up sheet, never say never. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? The record should reflect, oh, sir, yes, come forward.
My name is Tom Schroff, did I raise my right hand?
Yes, so would you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go ahead.
I represent Snoqualmie Mill, and we are very supportive of the expansion of the Salish Lodge as proposed because it's part of a pattern. We recently completed as part of the environmental impact statement, another traffic analysis. We found that there are more visitors than we thought to the valley, and actually, the falls is the second destination, second largest destination. The first is the casino. And so, by actually quite a large margin, it is correctly described, one and a half to two million people to the falls, but it's more than two million people to the casino, as an indication of its great success. So we really need to retain those visitors. The hotel rooms will do that, the Salish is one example, the Hampton Inn, the Marriott, if that ever gets done, is, and potentially, and hopefully, a hotel at the, at the casino itself. All of those things are needed to balance our economy and take advantage of the natural resources that we have here. So we encourage you to approve this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other individuals wishing to speak, we return then to any responses by either staff or by the applicant. Mr. Hoffman, any response by the staff?
No response by staff to any of the testimony, but just a reminder that we have some comments that we need to make sure are read into the record.
Let's do that now, so perhaps you can identify those.
We have two categories, the first being those that are already forwarded to the planning commission in packets. We need to make sure that those indeed were forwarded, as opposed to just posting on the website, we believe they were. Second category is letters or comment emails that staff has received. And we'll take them in reverse order, so those comment letters consist of, I'm going to read them by title. If I could just get organized for just one second. First off, we have a June twenty-six, twenty-eighteen letter to Mark Hoffman, Community Development Director from DAP, State Agency Department of Archaeological and Historic Preservation? DAP. That was in the packet to the commission and should be on the website. Then we have a July twelfth, actually, to correct, I'm going to do them in the other order. That was of the first category of materials that we believe the planning commission has, we'll get to the emails last. The second item is a July twelfth, twenty-eighteen letter from the Snoqualmie Tribe to Mark Hoffman, commenting on the master plan, and that reflects the written document that Councilman Michael Ross handed staff tonight. Then we have a July thirteenth, twenty-eighteen letter to Mark Hoffman, Director of Planning and Community Development, in regards to the Salish Lodge and Spa Expansion Project, I believe, addressing some of the comments in the DAP letter and the tribe letter. This is dated July thirteen, twenty-eighteen, from the Muckleshoot Tribal Council. We have a July tenth, twenty-eighteen, letter from the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe to Allison Brooks, PhD, also of DAP. So I believe, oh. One that we're not sure how it was forwarded, either email or July second, planning commission packet. So instead of determining it, it's essentially a, a version of one of the slides in the applicant's presentation. But it's important to note that the version that was on the screen appears to have been scrunched by the PDF machine, and that in tonight's packet materials, the planning commission has the actual eleven by seventeen. It's taken at an odd angle, and I believe the PDF distorts it. So the one that the staff would like to refer to of that rendering of the managed units as they may appear in the future from Tocal Road is in your packet materials tonight. The date on that being April second, twenty-eighteen, conceptual review from Tocal Road, prepared on behalf of the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe. So I believe that's all of category one, according to my notes. Which leaves us comment emails. We have one from Stephen Mullin Moses to Gretchen Kaler and Mark Hoffman. Gretchen Kaler being from DAP, Mark Hoffman being City of Snoqualmie. It's dated June twenty-seventh, twenty-eighteen, eleven fifteen AM. Staff's not sure that that was actually a comment for the public hearing, but we did receive it. So we didn't want to interpret the intent, we wanted it to be on the record. It's essentially three sentences indicating the, the high importance of the sacred location. Over the weekend, we had correspondence with a Tim Sonichens, Sonichsen. And so that email chain needs to be entered into the record, the last being Sunday, July fifteenth, twenty-eighteen, seven sixteen PM, with comments about concerns of the SEPA traffic. And whether, the main question in the email chain being, will this be turned into a casino? Lastly, this afternoon, we received an email from Mary Norton. It stated, Monday, July sixteenth, twenty-eighteen, three thirty-two PM, to Mark Hoffman, City of Snoqualmie, with concerns about large upscale housing development, construction activity, and support of trail connectivity. I believe that completes the materials of those two categories.
Thank you.
Mark, just a quick point of order, I'm not sure I received the first email that you referenced, I'm not able to find it, could I please just see that?
And, and we will distribute it, the key is that as these came in last night and today, we forwarded them for the record. You may have not have received or looked in your emails from Gwen, but either, regardless of that, we will get copies of those to you.
And the record should reflect that, except for Mr. Ross reintroducing the document he had, the tribe had sent earlier, there were no additional documents presented this evening, other than the PowerPoint demonstration. So, Mr. Danish, does the applicant have any response?
Yes, just remember, Chair of the Commission.
Mr. Danish, are you envisioning testimony or legal argument?
I'm going to summarize our response to that which we've heard, and if there needs to be any testimony, I'll invite that from our subject matter experts.
I won't have you sworn that.
Okay, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission, my name is Terry Danish, I'm an attorney with Dorsey &amp; Whitney. We represent the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe, the proponent of this project. And I think you've heard from Rachel during the course of many planning commission meetings now over the last couple of months. I guess I would summarize the Muckleshoot Tribe's interest in this project, obviously, there's an economic one, there's no question about that. But I would ask you to consider, as you deliberate on making the findings that the hearing examiner discussed, the fact that there probably can be no better steward of this property that can address the issues that we've heard specifically talked about by Mr. Ross on behalf of the Snoqualmie Tribe, than another Native American tribe, that is, my client, the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe. They, of all people, have a great sensitivity and awareness of the kinds of issues that have been raised. And in fact, the specific concerns, the specific concerns that were raised by Mr. Ross in particular with respect to the sacredness of the place, the sacredness of the falls, the sacredness of, of the property, the impacts on the traditional cultural property, those are subject to a specific federal process which we engaged in with the Department of Archaeological and Historic Preservation, as well as the City of Snoqualmie, I think Mr. Sterben could probably speak to that about five years ago. And those, and along with the Army Corps of Engineers, and of course, both tribes. And those issues were all resolved as part of that process. That then led to the twenty-sixteen restated and amended development agreement, the May twenty-sixteen development agreement that people have been talking about, which gets us to where we are now. But the intervening step was that the Snoqualmie Tribe litigated that development agreement amendment and all of these issues that you heard Mr. Ross talk about. All of those issues were decided in court in favor of the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe. Every one of them was resolved in our favor. The question of the SEPA review and its timeliness, the question of religious issues, you know, was dealt with at that time. And finally, of course, the question of, you know, the impacts in general, you know, to the Morgan Parcel and the fact that the development agreement had already been approved, and as the hearing examiner indicated, you know, that the project would be allowed to go forward, subject to the process that we're, you know, addressing right now. So I'm not going to testify as to any specific updates. I know that staff has received and reviewed our environmental analysis further to confirm the work that had already been done. The, the age of the, the age of the reports is irrelevant for purposes of this discussion in the sense that if those reports are still valid, and they were determined to be, then there's no reason to do any further updating them. To the extent that they were updated, and we have a subject matter expert witness here, Mike Reed from ten W, on the traffic issues, who provided updated analysis as of twenty-fifteen with respect to traffic impacts that resulted as part of the roundabout development. Those are all, you know, completely updated at this point. The view issue was something that we talked about earlier in the public meetings before the planning commission, and our experts addressed the potential impact of the views in light of the tree preservation plan that the project has for purposes of addressing any potential impacts to the Snoqualmie Falls themselves. And we looked at the most likely viewpoints that could potentially see any portion of the development, and as Mr. Mitchell testified, they were not, the project is not visible from the, the most likely viewpoints that could potentially see any portion of that project that could impact the traditional cultural property that is referred to by Mr. Ross in his testimony. So under the circumstances, I feel like we've addressed all of the issues that have been raised as a concern here by both the Snoqualmie Tribe and others. But in addition to that, there is additional information in your, that the city staff has with respect to updating this information, updating the technical reports that the Snoqualmie Tribe talked about, that staff could speak to if necessary. And ultimately, as, if you take a look at the July thirteenth letter that my client submitted, the chairperson of the tribe, Virginia Cross, submitted a letter on, on July the thirteenth that addressed the Snoqualmie Tribe's specific concerns with respect to both view, cultural resource assessment. The cultural resource assessment that was done for this project was more extensive than what is typically required, and that's because the Muckleshoot Tribe knew that there were sensitivities to the Snoqualmie Tribe's concerns with regard to that process. In fact, we consulted with the Snoqualmie Tribe on exactly what that cultural resource assessment should assess, where it should be assessed, how it should be assessed, and they participated in that assessment. So ultimately, I don't believe that, I'm not trying to minimize the concerns. If the Snoqualmie Tribe still has a strong concern with respect to its religious freedoms and ability to celebrate its culture at the falls as a result of our project, there is a federal process to take that up. That process is not the master plan review process that you are currently administering. And so I don't have any further comments. Rachel, if you have any, or if any of our other experts have anything to say, please feel free to step up to the mic and introduce yourself.
Appears to be no additional response from the applicant. That then brings us to the conclusion of the public testimony, but there are some, again, other matters to deal with. Mr. Hoffman, on some evidentiary matters, are, are we resolved?
Mr. Examiner, Jason Rogers, Senior Planner with the City of Snoqualmie Community Development Department. There is one more item we would like to enter into the record, which we inadvertently omitted here. This is a SEPA addendum dated July thirteenth, twenty-eighteen. This is an addendum to the Salish Expansion Expanded Environmental Checklist dated January twenty-second, two thousand two, and the mitigated determination of non-significance issued June eleventh, two thousand three. This addendum incorporates the following documents, a cultural resource assessment dated February two thousand eight regarding the Tocal Roundabout, a cultural resource assessment dated June two thousand eight regarding the Tocal Roundabout mitigation site, a SEPA mitigated determination of non-significance for the Tocal Roundabout dated September second, two thousand eight, Salish Lodge Expansion Traffic Analysis Addendum dated September third, twenty-fifteen, Subsurface Exploration, Geological Hazard, and Geotechnical Engineering Report for the Salish Expansion Lower Parking Area Improvement dated April thirtieth, twenty-eighteen, a letter dated April thirteenth, twenty-sixteen, from SW, the firm SWCA, to Partite, transmitting results of cultural resources monitoring for the Tocal Road Roundabout Construction, Cultural Resource Anal- Analysis Management Summary dated September twenty-eighth, twenty-sixteen, by ERCI for the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe regarding the Morgan Parcel, a fiscal impact summary dated- A fiscal impact summary dated March 26, 2018 by Eco Northwest for the Mukulchut Indian Tribe; and then the previously referenced letter of comment from the Washington State Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation dated June 26. Those are the items in the addendum.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Is that a document or a series of documents that has been made available to the Commission already?
The documents, so, let's see, most, I would say approximately the first half of the documents I referenced are available on the city's website. The second half of them are, let me see. The older ones, I should say, are available on the city's website. The newer ones from 2016 and forward are going to be, are available either as part of the applicant's submittal packet or have been provided to the Planning Commission as part of previous packet materials.
So, by one means or another, all documents you've identified just now have been made available?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other evidentiary questions, I believe Mr. Sterbank had some comments to make as well.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Examiner. As Mr. Dannish pointed out, many of the arguments that the Commission heard this evening were made previously with respect to the amended and restated development agreement. And, and then that the Council's decision was challenged in Superior Court through a process known as a land use petition under the Land Use Petition Act. And so, the similarity of the arguments gives me some concern that we're going to find ourselves in that process again. And that process is limited to consideration of the record that's going to be made before, primarily before you and the city council. And so, I'd like to address with some more specificity and to provide you some additional documents so that they're in the record should we find ourselves there. I think the first point to address is the one with respect to SEPA. Mr. Dannish touched on, and just so that the Commission and the public are aware, when, there are a series of regulations adopted by the Department of Ecology that govern the SEPA process. And one of those regulations says when a SEPA threshold environmental determination has been issued for a project, that as subsequent phases of that project progress, the local jurisdiction shall utilize the SEPA that's already been done. And so, the SEPA that has been done are not so much the individual reports, but the threshold determination that there was, with mitigating conditions, not likely to be substantial adverse environmental impacts that would require an environmental impact statement. And so, that document, which Mr. Hoffman referred to, the MDNS, that's what has been relied on and must be relied on by the city at this juncture, absent proof of specific new information about adverse environmental effects from the project that were not encompassed by the scope of the previously prepared documents. And so, that's, people can argue about the age and, you know, nitpick various aspects of those other underlying reports, but it's really primarily did the scope of those take into account the general scope of possible impacts? And I think we would submit that they do, and therefore, the city is justified in relying on the MDNS, its age notwithstanding. With respect to the particular arguments then that were advanced about impacts to the falls and so on. And I, I will say, you know, that I have high regard for Councilmember Ross and his commitment to the process. And that, like many of the rest of us here, this is a process that pre, the commencement of predates Mr. Ross's participation here, predates mine as well. And so, there are some older documents that I think bear reference to. The first is when, if someone's going to talk about this project desecrating the site or developing the site. And I apologize, I don't have a good copy of this photo handy, but want to submit it. And we'll ask the Chair to, to hold the record open for perhaps another 24 hours, so I can provide that. But it's an aerial photo from 1920 that shows virtually the entire hillside, the lower portion and the entire portion of the Morgan Parcel, clear cut. Not, not what the applicant has proposed in the photos, what you showed, but something significantly more severe. And then, the site has been in that condition essentially since then. Regrowth and then additional cutting has occurred. So, this is not a pristine site that someone is proposing development on for the first time. This is a site that has been actively used in industrial logging for approximately 100 years. The second point to observe is that when people talk about view, other viewpoints from within the traditional cultural property or the TCP, the TCP itself has a specific geographic limitation that is stated in the registration of the TCP with the national, with the Keeper of the National Register of Historic Places. And I'll provide you the doc, that document. But it is limited to the falls themselves from the apex to the plunge pool, the plunge pool, and the rock rim. So, if you're talking about viewpoints from down at the plunge pool, I'm not sure you could see anything beyond the observation deck, let alone up the hill to the site, anything down there. There are no viewpoints from the top of the falls that anyone can access. And the, the observation deck from which the visual simulations were taken is on the only part of the rock rim that is accessible. So, perhaps the Snoqualmie Tribe have specific other locations that they had in mind for a visual simulation. I've not heard one mentioned, and I can't, given the limitations of the TCP itself, I can't imagine where those might be. And then, the last, and this is the other history that, that I was alluding to, that I think predates Mr. Ross's involvement. And I appreciate his commitment to say that it's, this is not about economic competition. But the other documents from the Snoqualmie Tribe's involvement, I think, suggest otherwise. And referring specifically to the consultation process Mr. Dannish mentioned that took place with respect to the Toko Roundabout, and I will provide those documents as well. And during that process, representatives of the tribe communicated to the Army Corps of Engineers that they wanted to talk about a larger land use area than the TCP would allow because they wanted to affect those land use decisions. And therefore, they requested that the Army Corps actually recommend a much larger boundary of the TCP using that process. And the Army Corps realized that, that as Mr. Dannish suggested, there's a specific, specific federal process for that. And they could not, they, since they weren't going through that, the Army Corps couldn't do that. And neither, neither can this body. But it suggests, I think strongly, that the arguments that you hear about, you heard tonight about the falls are intended to affect this body's decision about the development more than they are about specific practices, about which no detail had been provided, no requests made about what could be done specifically to protect those. And last but not least, on the economic competition, these are the two other documents that I will provide if the, with the Commission's indulgence, tomorrow we're able to pull those, is that, as one of your public commenters testified, the Snoqualmie Tribe itself has plans for a very large hotel and an expansion of the casino and redevelopment of the Snoqualmie Tribal Headquarters Site, which is located in the city, all of which are developments within the vicinity of the falls and are the proposed developments of land uses that would be in direct competition with the application in front of you tonight. So, I think those bear on the argument that you hear, that you heard tonight, that it's not about economic competition, and actually, that those documents would undercut that argument. And for completeness of the record's sake, I would like to submit those. So, I've got multiple copies here. Unfortunately, they're not collated, so I can just get one set, set to the Chair if individual Commission members would like to see them. I've got enough, enough for everyone. Oh, and sorry, one, one other thing. There was an, an argument, I think, made in that document about water quality and sufficient water for the, for the hotel and that the city has pending applications with the Department of Ecology to consolidate water rights and some argument about what the environmental impact of those might be. And I have a letter from just last year, July 18, 2017, from the Department of Fish and Wildlife, indicating no impact to fish or wildlife or the habitat they rely on because their, the city's consolidation application doesn't change the water quantities that are already allowed under the city's existing rights. And the development agreement that you have, using the city's existing water rights, makes commitments to sufficient water for, for the project. So, that, that document will be in what we submit as well.
Madam Chair, it's your hearing, not mine. Might I suggest, in light of Mr. Sterbank's suggestions, that you continue your hearing until tomorrow for the presentation of additional documentation by the city that allows Mr. Sterbank to sort it and identify it, and then presents a deadline by which all that's made available to the Commission. And then, that would be the closing of your public record by which then you have 30 days from tomorrow, rather than 30 days from today, to then deliberate and render your recommendations to the city council. Does that make sense?
It does, and I appreciate your suggestion. And I feel that in light of the extensive history of this project and the land, that that would be appropriate.
In, in that process then, I believe your public hearing is closed for today, with again, the record held open until tomorrow for that, for that limited purpose. That is, not to invite general comment, but to allow the city to present the materials that is identified. But otherwise, your public hearing is closed, would be closed today, and you may want to identify or announce that, so that whatever other business you have tonight, you can then attend to.
Yes, thank you. And I will now close the public hearing at 8:48 PM. Thank you all for your participation and engagement in attending tonight's meeting, and thank you to our facilitator.
It's a pleasure.
Next on our agenda is our discussion.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Could we, could we suggest taking a very short recess to allow the room to clear?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you.
...environmental determination and making a new one or demanding additional.
Okay, that's all I wanted clarity on.
Right.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up clarification question to that. So they, in that same section that Commissioner Money is referring to, they mentioned the addition of new species to the list that were not included prior to that. Does that not bear significance then?
Those, well, they're talking about species that are not found above the Falls.
Okay.
Like the Puget Sound Chinook, I think, and the Orca.
I saw Puget Sound Chinook. I'm trying to find the section where it was.
Or Steelhead, sorry, is the other.
Right. Yeah, I don't, I don't think it was Orca.
That's also been, that's also been listed since the-
But there was also a-
Pugger tubing the river.
There was an insect. I'm trying to find that in here.
Maybe in Borst Lake, I don't know.
There was an addition of an insect as well. So I'm curious, is the addition of the new species to the list, that does not bear significance then?
As I said, not by itself. It would be incumbent on someone who, who was making that argument to come forward with evidence of the specific impact.
Okay.
New information about impact of the project on this species that's now listed. And we didn't hear any of that. We heard mostly, well, there's been this and this and this change. Generally kind of nonspecific without any connection to impact from the project. And that's the piece, in my view, is missing.
Okay.
Good question. The word religious freedom came up a few times. So I'm just curious and want to know if Snoqualmie Tribe had recently or in last 10, 20 years have been having any religious ceremony on this Morgan Parcel?
Again, I'll only state my opinion. My opinion is yes, but we wouldn't know because they typically do not disclose that. And there's protocols in place-
He's talking about the Morgan Parcel, not the Falls.
That's, and I mean in general, anywhere. And so as Planning Director, I would, I would say my opinion is that they have practices in some areas and I wouldn't know where they are nor, nor am I going to have access to that. Regardless of whether it's in the TPC, the Rim Plunge Pool, Conservation Area, et cetera, I would not be aware of that. Nor would they typically disclose that to us.
And this project will not have effect on the mist, right? It's going to continue to be flow and, you know?
There's no information that this project will affect the amount of water that goes over the Falls.
Right.
One, one, two questions, actually. I think at the, at the outset of the public hearing, our hearings examiner, very succinctly, and I, I've been going back through our old meeting minutes and materials to find it, stated so succinctly, but at the outset of his remarks, he, he outlined the six or seven criteria that we are to follow in our decision-making process. And I know we went over it early on and I've been trying to find it, but I, I think as we now reach, with the clock to start ticking tomorrow, the end of this process, it would be a good reminder for us to have that, maybe just to kind of review if there's a way to capture that, that synopsis of what are those, you know, six or seven criteria that we are supposed to be looking at as we make a decision.
Absolutely. Staff can help train those at the beginning of the Commission's-
And of course, though, he was summarizing, there are more.
Okay.
But he was looking at just if, someone wants to go before Mark gets back to you on that. My recollection was he was referring to seventeen point five oh point zero nine zero E, which addresses your recommendation and that the, the report shall include but not, need not be limited to the following items. And then there are these six topics that he was referring to.
Can you give that reference again?
Sure. It's seventeen dot five zero dot zero nine zero dot E, or per N, capital E.
Thank you.
Thank you. And second question was, I'm assuming in advance of the special meeting on the 25th, that we will be receiving a draft motion to comment on? Is that coming or at what point in time?
The short answer is yes, we will. There will, there will be a fairly substantial planning mission, draft planning mission resolution with a whole list of findings and conclusions and recommendations for the councils to consider.
Okay.
Suggested conditions of approval.
Excellent. Now, just going to tag on to that, that if we could have as much time as possible before the next, or the meeting when we consider that to review, that would certainly be appreciated.
Any additional comments? Okay. I think in light of all of the materials that we've received, it's best to table further discussion until our next meeting. So that will bring us to the next item on the agenda, which is items of planning commissioner interest. We will move down the table.
Did we ever make any headway or understanding on what's happening outside the Snoqualmie Brewery with the trees and the permits and the barrels?
Okay, so we are-
Way to delegate, Mark.
I didn't know where to start. There's plenty of updates.
So, so multiple updates here. The, the structure, the building construction is nearing its close. John Cooper was out there today to do some inspections. The tree issue is currently being discussed with the Public Works Department as to how that gets closed out. The issue there is that, of course, they cut down the existing street trees. They're covered the barrels. They, they can't plant new trees until the fall. This is not a good time to plant. The trees always die. And so the question then becomes, how do we get certain permit conditions fulfilled now or later? And get the trees planted in the fall? So that's being looked at. Hopefully, we'll get that resolved soon. I know that certainly the, the owner is anxious to get everything open. So that's the status.
And it's not unusual for a condition like that to be a final punchless item secured by a letter of credit or set aside a funds or a bond or some other mechanism. And that's a conversation that I don't think has occurred, needs to occur before there's going to be a sign-off on occupancy for them to open.
So the, the portion of update that's the Planning Director's responsibility is the barrels and the work and the trees and so forth are part of three street use permits that were issued by the Parks and Public Works Department, not part of anything the Planning Commission reviewed as far as the murals, the patio, et cetera. However, this week, when the applicant is going to request temporary occupancy, and John Cooper was out there today to look at life safety, things associated with the property and the building permit, we need to coordinate. And so those street use permit issues need to be addressed in some way before the city issues temporary occupancy. Even though the applicant is going to want that at that moment, the, the, I'll just say the Community Development Director will not be issuing that until those street use permit issues are addressed in some fashion. Maybe not completed physically, but addressed fully.
So I think I just, well, and I said it last week or last meeting too, I think for the record, what I am reacting to so strongly is the fact that as a planning commission, we determined that we didn't want beer barrels painted on the side of the sign, right? Or on the, what do we call it? The front of the brewery?
Falls Avenue frontage.
Yes, that's right. And, you know, one week later, we show up and there's beer barrels, you know, now decorating the street. It's kind of, I feel a little bit like we're, we were worked around or through or, so.
Well, I'll characterize it was, that portion of what you see was not done by the applicant owner pursuant to anything that was under the purview of the planning commission.
Understand.
It was done by that applicant owner, may or may not be part of the three street use permits, but we will not issue temporary occupancy until that is addressed.
Great.
I guess one other thing to say from, with my risk management liability hat on, if you went out there now and ground those root balls out, then you'd have grates with holes in them in the middle of the sidewalk. And you could put orange cones over them or you could, or the candles or a variety of other public works, traffic management solutions that also don't look very good. So, I mean, I'll leave the aesthetics to these guys, but there's that consideration at play too. And it may come down to a lesser of evils in terms of what it looks like between now and when the new trees go in. Just so we don't have people breaking their ankle and the, and then, then that'll, that claim will come to me.
And lastly, the, the owner was in today at the counter while we were busy preparing for all of tonight's meetings and indicated that he has a Falls Avenue frontage treatment that he would like to perform. And he was again informed today that that needs to go to Planning Commission. He didn't agree, but that's staff's determination.
To follow up on that, from a risk management standpoint, is there, did John Cooper evaluate if there's enough clearance between the beer barrels in the building for, to be ADA compliant?
John Cooper did not. He's evaluating the building permit, the barrels, until they are approved by, adequately addressed by the Parks Public Works as far as even being allowed there, he would not make that determination. Now, if that department asked John Cooper, what are the standards? What could be approved? What's the four feet? How do you measure it? He is available. But it has not been done yet. There's a question that I have as to whether anything's approved, the barrels being there at all. That discussion is ongoing.
I'm worried about the ADA compliance because it's pretty tight in that area.
Is there an avenue where we can refer this to the Parks and Rec? I don't know.
That department gave an update to that council committee this evening, I thought.
Okay.
There were no conclusions. I imagine due to the urgency expressed by the owner today, tomorrow, Wednesday are going to be key days for that department.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Nothing. Yes, I would like to, I think that one of the biggest buzzwords you're going to see in state legislature this year is affordable housing. And I would like us to discuss at some time, fee and lieu programs. Addressing that.
Nothing for me. Okay.
I'd just like to, on the record, since I sent an email, that I think that we straddle two different functions from when we're operating as a planning commission or as when we're rendering judgment as a historical design review. And I just wanted to get officially Mr. Sterbank's opinion on that.
When you do design review or when you decide on a signed permit, or as in tonight, then you're sitting in a quasi-judicial capacity. If you're making a recommendation about development of a fee and lieu program or reviewing the minor changes to clean up to the development standards or even the non-minor ones, the height standard, then you're acting in a legislative capacity.
Hold on a second. So the example, to put a fine point on it, was in fact that frontage of the Snoqualmie Falls. There was nothing, I believe, that was in violation of the standards, but we viewed it was not in keeping with historical view of the city. And so not in a, you know, as a, filling in for the design review, we said, we don't believe, we, you know, almost said, we don't like it. We said, we don't believe this fits in. Please do something else, and which they did, and which we, we were okay with. So my whole point was, in that function, when we're not, you know, when we're filling in for the nonexistent historical design review, there is something that we actually asked to render judgment beyond quasi-judicial.
But, well, but it is, it is quasi-judicial and you're-
Still is?
Yes. Because you're applying their standards, right? If you're, were they acting, I wasn't-
They were as a, as a policy or protocol with the code cleanups for 2018. Now it's official. So either way, what you did in 2017 and what you will now do in 2018 is quasi-judicial, applying those criteria to a site request. The problem before was, the answer was, well, we've always done it that way. What the planning commission can rely on now is that the Snoqualmie Municipal Code says you act as that body.
Right. But whenever you're taking a set of already adopted standards, in this case, our historic district standards-
Site, development standards.
Site development standards. And if you're applying those to a specific piece of property, then you're acting in a quasi-judicial capacity. Similar to here, tonight, you're applying the planned commercial, industrial, planned residential standards to a particular application.
So as in a planning commission member, when I'm wearing my design review hat, what I'm hearing is there's no subjectivity to it. It either meets the code or it doesn't. And that's where I think we struggle because-
I was about to go there next, and that is that the historic standards here, as they, in many cases were design standards, as in many cities, are subjective. And many things can't be, you know, reduced to a purely objective standard. And the hearing examiner talked a little bit about that tonight. Some, some things are purely objective and others are, are less so. You have to be careful in the historic or the design review context that it doesn't get, even though things are subjective, that you try not to get into it, well, because I don't like it, or I can't define this, but I know it when I see it kind of standard. Because the Washington Supreme Court has said in a couple of cases, including one most notably in our sister city in Issaquah, that, you know, if it, if it's that subjective, that it's arbitrary and capricious and unconstitutional to apply the standard to, if, you know, if an applicant can't read it and know what it means, and if people say, well, I don't know, it's this, it's that, you know, I think their standards, I could, I can pull the case and, and shoot you some examples, but they had, they had the standards that said it should be designed with a Pacific Northwest kind of feel.
So there was artwork that I believe fit all the color modes, and we simply didn't believe it fit the historic standard. We gave that feedback. They changed it. And that was the only point. That appeared to be a little different than normal planning commission functions. That was the basis of my email. So you're saying-
Right. And so when you do that-
Even when you do that, it's still quasi-
That's quasi-judicial. And when you do do it, you should do it with as much specificity as, referring back to the standards, well, it doesn't meet historic standards because of this aspect or this aspect found here in this standard.
And why?
Right. And, and why as opposed to, you know, I don't think that looks historic.
And just by way of example, when, when, when the director is using the word subjective, doesn't mean, give us your opinion. How do you, what's your gut tell you? It means apply these criteria to the request, but it's things like preserve a building's character. I think that's subjective. There are criteria that you need to apply. Whereas things that may not be so subjective, but I view as an objective standard to a maximum height of 30 feet. There's no subjectivity in that. You can easily apply that. Is it 29 feet, 11 inches? Or is it 30 feet, one inch? That's not subjective as far as criteria. But there's no subjectivity as to which criteria you can apply to it. Those are listed.
When we were talking about the Snoqualmie Brewery- We actually did not agree. There was a split vote. So I think it was a very democratic decision and-
No, it was. I was just, it, it was, but it wasn't a question of, is it the code? I mean, that was not the question at all. Is it, is it even historic character?
It doesn't have the colors.
Yeah.
But the words Snoqualmie Falls, some people like, some people don't.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. I, all right. I just, I just want to go right and see, we really ought to specify, at least when we're acting as a historical design review versus as a planning commission, because I think, I think there's a little bit more judgment in the historic one as opposed to my condition, in my opinion.
And then some identification of the specific standards that you're applying when you're sitting in that context. And my apologies for not, you were, it was on my list to, because I wanted to give you some explanation of this Issaquah case and examples of sort of where, where the line is. And, and maybe on Mark and Jason's and your work plan in the coming, you know, months or year, we'll be revamping some of these standards to hopefully be less subjective and more, more objective. Because they could use some tuning up.
I think in this particular case, we faced a unique challenge where, in this instance, the mural then started to resemble a sign and not a mural, incorporating the colors of the business and the typography and that sort of thing that, you know, that was also a bit of a-
And it was a split vote, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. And, but the majority is the action. I have one more. I would like to strongly second what Commissioner Beans had said for the fee and lieu discussion. I think that suggestion was an opportunity that we ought to take very seriously and, and perhaps discuss with council or whatnot. I think, again, they'd asked for that option. I don't believe it's in our purview to, you know, to recommend it or whatnot, but I certainly think it's a, it's something that could really add funds to the city that no other way could. And I really think we ought to have that discussion. And I'm not sure what the right area is, but I just wouldn't let that go.
We have it noted. My memory is not that grand, but there are seven council goals. They're, they're working through them. They'll do it again this Monday night. I believe we're through goals number one and two with objectives. I don't think the in lieu fee, affordable housing is part of one and two, which means if my memory is correct, we will get to that issue. That will be of the category of, as part of that work program for that item, what would you expect from the planning commission and/or EDC, et cetera, as input?
Well, just to put a fine point on it, it struck me when we were doing the affordable housing near the hospital, that because we received county money, we're completely bound by those rules for applicability, like if we're in Issaquah and others. And so again, I'm suggesting this. I may, I may be wrong in here, but if we do a fee and lieu and for this development, we could get direct city money, again, I might be wrong, that we would have control over and we would have much more ability to control how that is used for the city. So again, I think that is a rare opportunity. I don't know if another opportunity is going to come up quite that rich again. And I really think we ought to, we ought to, we ought to embrace it.
The goal is framed, or at least the discussion, and I believe it got enough votes from enough council members, is that maybe it, it's too late to apply to Snoqualmie Ridge One or Two or Salish or Mill, which doesn't have a large residential element. But it's certainly not too late to apply to the urban growth area and a future annexation, which envisages residential at some scale. So there's time for that. And if it's in the goal, that will be-
I'm sorry to belabor this, but, but again, in a public sentiment, I mean, this is such an important issue. I heard what I thought, and I think Commissioner Means said the same thing, that the development that's about to take place, the residential one, so it's not in under review right now, rather than build the required 15%, that they'd be willing to pay the city a fee to not do that. That way they could build it all out.
You have heard that?
And we could take that money and we could do what we want, where we want.
That's correct.
Okay. And I'm saying, we ought to seize that opportunity. And I think that's what Commissioner Means was suggesting as well, and I believe.
In, in, your comment in regard to the project that you had held a public hearing tonight, you'll see in the narrative, the application materials, the discussion about an affordable housing plan. And then we also forwarded an actual document that is a draft housing plan. And so when you come back at your next meeting, you could certainly speak to those items in relation to this Salish master plan and then have it reflected in your recommendation.
Okay. Right. And it may be that you would have a recommended condition that with respect to the affordable plan and/or, and payment of a, or, or payment of a fee in lieu should, you know, the parameters for such a program be established prior to approval of the subdivision of the residential unit, you know, something that was forward-looking. You know, usually I would try to steer folks away from that, but where you, where you have the commission interest and the applicant asking for it, you know, it gives you a little bit more latitude.
Commissioner Shakil?
No, I don't have anything.
Were you finished?
No, no.
Okay, okay. I don't have anything as well. So that brings us to upcoming schedule.
So upcoming schedule, we have a special meeting next Wednesday, July 25th, 7:00 PM, right here in council chambers. We will endeavor to get all the materials to you as soon as possible. You know, the city attorney will get you a lot of the historical documents. He was referencing, we are going to do our very best to get you a draft planning mission resolution. We do have a very short turnaround time, so we ask for at least a little bit of your patience with us. These are, unfortunately, Salish is not the only thing on our plate as you, you know, the brewery discussion, for example, and, and other things that are going on. See, Mill Site Master Plan, no update there. The preliminary and final plan review procedures, I think that's more likely to be in front of the commission by September, simply due to staff workload, but we'll get that to you as soon as we can. A couple more things to add that didn't make it on the agenda because the agenda was done last Friday. You heard Mark mention the breweries coming in with a new proposal for their Falls Avenue facade, so stay tuned to that. You will see that at the earliest, your August 6th meeting. It will not be part of the special meeting under any circumstances. That meeting is solely devoted to Salish. And then another one that the city council has expressed interest in the planning commission considering would be penalties for repeat permit violations. That one is, it quite literally came out of, out of the council meeting last Monday, so we don't have a firm grasp on it of yet. So we're going to kind of get that scoped a little better and in front of you probably sometime this fall. But to give you a preview of coming attractions.
So the, quick question about the Mill Site. Do we have the EIS?
Nope.
It does not exist in, in draft form, and they're still doing some traffic model.
You heard Tom Stroff at the public hearing reference that they have, they're, they're working on their traffic modeling. The traffic modeling is kind of a key component in them conducting some other portions of the EIS, things about noise, things about emissions. So once they get their traffic modeling done, they can start moving along on more of their things and getting it wrapped up. But they're not done with all that yet.
And I know in the past we've talked about timeframes. Do we have any deadlines for them?
Not in the short to medium term. Realistically, if they go away and don't talk with us or don't do anything, at some point, I'd send them a letter and say, do you intend to act on this? I believe it's 120 days of inactivity or silence. I don't think that's going to be the case.
So we don't put deadlines on EIS studies or anything like that?
No, that time tolls the application.
Right. Because usually you want those to be more thorough rather than less. So we're not trying to arbitrarily cut people off if they're trying to get us a better product. That said, we're all curious.
Quite a long time.
Bob, do the special meeting rules for Planning Commission follow what we did at council, where it has to be whatever is noticed in the agenda? You can't, you can't take additional items up.
Right. But I think there's still time if you wanted to add something to that agenda.
I just wanted to know for during that meeting that-
Yes.
I think we have plenty on that agenda.
Yeah. I mean, for example, we probably won't even bring minutes to that as, as one example because we want, we want the focus to be on Salish. So let's, you know, let's push some things off the agenda that don't absolutely need to be there to, so you can focus your time most effectively, especially for a special meeting.
Please.
Yeah. And just really quickly, just because it's related to dates, I wanted to get on the record that I'm going to be unavailable from August 15th to September 5th. And will not be attending.
Are you available August 6th?
Yes.
Anybody else have any known August vacations?
I do, but I don't know when they are.
I'll ask his wife. I'll ask his wife. I'll get back to you.
Is that a known, unknown?
I will be here the 6th, but I don't know about, you can call from Africa.
Yeah, I can call from Africa.
Well, and part, and part of the reason for Mark asking is there's, there's of course always possibility of, if not enough of you are going to be around to constitute a quorum, we can preemptively cancel a meeting. So you may want to all check your calendars. We would highly, highly suggest that you all be available for August 6th, just in case you need to wrap up the Salish discussion.
Or even review of, of the draft findings and commissions.
Well, thank you everyone for your time tonight. And we will close this, with no further business, we will close this meeting at 9:34 PM.
I wait. I have one more question, please.
Where are you off to?